Good morning. I call the agenda briefing, September sixteenth open. Imocation today will be George Wayne Acoch Jr. Pledge of allegiance will be Commissioner Tim Harrell.
Okay, then we move into the approval of minutes for the August nineteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. And then we have discussion and adjustment of the agenda is item number two. For today's meeting, we will be removing item number four, which is under unfinished business. Discussion of the use of opioid settlement funds for the ninth judicial district's accountability and recovery courts. Then moving on to special presentations, item number three will have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty honoring the life of Louis M. Payton Jr. Commissioner Daughery, are you going to read that?
Yes.
And then moving, having removed unfinished business, we'll move to your consent and into budget amendments.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
We're going to begin with number sixty five from the Health Department. This budget amendment is to allocate a Wayne County Department of Social Service reimbursement for salaries and fringe and travel. These funds will be used for the Health Department employee that is participating in a DSS case for interpretation services.
How much was that?
The total was two thousand three seventy eight fifty seven.
Bless you.
Number sixty nine, this is for the Sheriff's Office, the SRO Division. The purpose of this budget amendment is to realign funds for the purchase of computers for the three additional school resource officers. That total is nine thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and sixty seven cents.
Wow, those computers are rather expensive, aren't they?
Okay.
Number seventy two is for the Health Department. This budget amendment is to realign the budget for the Health Savings Account contributions. Number seventy eight is for the Library. The purpose of this budget amendment is to accept and appropriate grant funding for the ARSL State Library of North Carolina Scholarship from the State Library. This grant will fund two scholarships at fifteen hundred dollars each to two library employees, enabling them to attend the ARSL Conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Number eighty two is also from the Library. This is to appropriate a donation made for the upgrade of the Carolyn Bedore Gardens. Number eighty six is for the Sheriff's Office. This is to record receipt of revenues for controlled substance tax from the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Number eighty eight is also for the Sheriff's Office. This is to realign the budget to pay wages for part-time school resource officers from the appropriate line item.
So they're moving that from, to put it in the right spot.
Correct, so when the budget was, when the budget was set up last year, we did not know that there was part-time officers at that point, so it did not get placed in the correct line item. So we're not increasing the budget, we're just moving the funds.
That one hit. Looking as I can.
It was up there a while ago and then it.
Told you, we need your help.
Needs a technical assistance.
I'm going back to a pencil and pad. You added it up.
I did.
Went completely out, didn't it?
I did.
You guys could continue on, I'll make sure this works.
Okay. Yes, I saw the screen here in front of us.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll continue with number eighty nine from the Finance Office. This budget amendment is to allocate funds received from Prevention and Treatment Center, as well as the Methibisheft project, to be used to refund to the North Carolina Department of Public Safety for structured day and community intervention program. And the last one is number ninety one. This is for the Health Department. This is to appropriate additional funds for the General Communicable Disease Control Agreement addendum. The use of these funds are to enable the Health Department to implement the electronic test ordering and result system. And that is all that I have.
All right, thank you.
Can we go back to the one prior to asthma, fellow Wiser? What that word meant?
Methibisheft.
Keep on going down, oh, right there, starts with an M.
Methibisheft project.
Methibisheft.
What is that?
It's actually a biblical term.
He's the grandson of Saul.
But I mean, what I'm saying is, what is the project?
These are, these are JCPC programs, they did not spend all of their funds. These are pass-throughs, so they have returned them to us, now we have to return them back to the state.
Okay. But what was the, we don't know what, okay.
It's a community mentoring program, it looks like.
Okay, got it.
That's Pastor A, he's actually been in here presenting to us in years past, I'm not sure I'm long.
He didn't use all the funds?
Thank you, appreciate it, for the education.
Moving along, item number six is establish a public hearing on October the seventh, twenty twenty five at nine thirty a.m. to receive public comments on an amendment to the Wayne County Electronic Gaming Operations Ordinance to remove accessory gaming and add setback required restrictions for tobacco slash hemp retail operations.
All right, good morning. Yeah, this is, there's actually two changes to this, to the ordinance. Basically, the first change is regarding electronic gaming. Right now, electronic gaming operations, we're required to be set back a thousand feet from a house, a school, public parks, daycares, those type of things.
Churches.
Yep, and but what we don't, what we do allow though is you can have up to two in an established business operation as an accessory use and not meet those same setbacks. So if you have a gas station or any other retail use or commercial use, you can actually have two accessory gaming operations. So you might come on a gas station and see a couple in there, and that's what that is. But what we're proposing is that all gaming, including those accessory uses, meet the same requirement. So we're moving the accessory, the ability to do the two accessory, which means basically all gaming operations, whether you have one, two, or a hundred, would have to meet the same hundred-foot setback. The other change is we're also applying the ordinance with that thousand-foot setback to tobacco and hemp retail operations. So they too would have to meet the same setbacks as electronic gaming, which would be a thousand feet from those same facilities, schools, residences, and so forth with that. Other jurisdictions have already put this in place with tobacco and hemp. I believe Goldsboro has already done it, Lake County has, Cumberland County, and some others. So anyway, we're looking to establish that as well here in Wayne County. Well, what we're asking is that you just establish a public hearing for next month, so we can advertise it.
My question would be, why would we remove the exemption on the two gaming?
Well, because the two game, well, really, at this point, all games now, since that ordinance was put in place, are now basically illegal based on the Supreme Court ruling. So, you know, at this point, from a planning standpoint, I'm uncomfortable with issuing permits now for facilities that, you know, could be illegal or are illegal. But two, a lot of these facilities, they're putting in two, and then we go back and check, and they have three, they have four, they have five, they put some in a back room. And we're constantly battling those.
But if all of them are illegal, why would they have two or three?
Right.
Are they not illegal?
It's up to law enforcement to handle those. And larger facilities, they've been going after some of those, it's hard to go after some of these small ones. But just because there are so many of them. But anyway, we're looking to maybe help control that somewhat with our ordinance.
So for my clarification, all of these machines are illegal?
Yes, from what I understand, all of them.
Well, we definitely ought to ban them if they are already illegal.
Agreed, so, I mean, is there something that we can, language we can put in that there's none, no gaming in Wayne County?
So the Supreme Court decision was an interpretation of the Criminal Statute for Chapter fourteen of the General Statutes. So that would be something that would be up to the Sheriff's Office or law enforcement to enforce. The way that it's been explained to me is they don't target these two and three machine operations because so much goes into the seizure, and there's so many logistics of it. So they really only target the larger operations. So what this would do would make this pretty restrictive within the county, based off the one hundred foot. We don't, we don't have any authority to shut it down based off Chapter fourteen. We don't have criminal enforcement authority, we can only enforce our ordinance.
So if we put.
But this would give us civil.
Civil, yes, we do have several.
So we could go in as a code enforcement and issue civil penalty for having.
So citations, and then if they're still not compliant, we could go to court and get an injunction to have them shut down.
So large establishments are legal or not legal?
Illegal.
They're illegal.
And generally, when we find those, we reach out to law enforcement because that's a more effective and quicker tool to get these operations shut down.
So any language we put in there, would it, would it aid in, which, I mean, you're not giving permits for large, for anything now, basically, is what you're, okay. So the ones that are there now are just grandfathered, or are they going to be?
They're vested if they're permitted. So if they've gone through the permitted process.
But it can't be but two.
Right.
So if they, if they.
They have to be in compliance, and they have to be properly permitted.
So if they go back and check and they got three, does that?
Then they would be in violation.
Does that take, does that take the two out altogether too?
That ceases compliance of the existing use.
So that way they would be going aboard.
They would lose their rights, yeah.
I guess what I'm asking is, do we need to put stronger language into, in the ordinance? I mean.
I don't believe so, because the way the ordinance is written now, you basically can't have the two, you can't have any. And with our enforcement part of this ordinance, our enforcement section is in conjunction with the state statute for what we can do. So we really can't make that any more restrictive either. So, but I feel like we've got a good tool here if this gets amended to really help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, and number seven is establish a public hearing on October seventh, twenty twenty five at nine thirty a.m. to receive public comments on a request to rezone nine point oh four acres in the Bridgeton Township from community shopping to R H twenty from property, for property located at the end of Swinson Drive.
Yeah, this is, we did have a rezoning request for that, that blue area on the map. That's actually, the road that goes north and south there is Highway one seventeen, it's on the west side of one seventeen, where Swinson Road dead ends. If you're familiar with that, just south of Goldsboro. And the area in red is what's being requested to be rezoned, is community shopping because of the three hundred foot strip that was established along Highway one seventeen for commercial, for billboards, basically, or outdoor advertising. There are no billboards on this site, so they're requesting that it be rezoned, so it'd be the same as the R A twenty next door. The same property owner that owns this piece owns the R A twenty properties as well to the west. You can see there's already residential there. This request, we've also added, included the properties there on the north, those residential properties, just so that they become, come in compliance, and they're not non-conforming with that CS as well. So that's part of the public notice as well. But what we're asking is to establish a public hearing next month, and we'll post the property, we'll send out notices to adjacent property owners and put it in.
And I'm not quite understanding why they want it rezoned to R A twenty.
They have, from what I understand, I think they have interest in developing a residential subdivision. And so the R A twenty part to the left or to the west is, they can do that in, but the CS zoning, they could not until they rezone that part. And for commercial development, they ever wanted to develop it for commercial, the only access would be through the R A twenty residential part when they develop it. So there's really no, other than a billboard, which they have no intention of doing, there's really no other use for commercial there at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you, Barry. Moving on to number eight is a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty eight, adopting the fifty-second amendment to the Position Classification and Pay Plan for Wayne County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a grant-funded position for the Sheriff's Department, and we're just adding it, so it's an administrative change for your approval. Any questions?
And this was a grant?
Grant-funded, yes. So we just have to add the title to the pay plan.
How long Mr. Grant asked?
I don't know, the Sheriff's Department has all the details, I would assume it's greater than a year.
That's through the.
Is this the lead position?
Yes, lead instructor.
Yeah, this was funded with our opioid settlement funds. I don't recall how long that is, it's multi-years, yeah, it's three years.
What would be his position, I mean, what would he be doing, is it school or just regular routine?
That's the lead.
Lead instructor, I think, and I'm sure.
School, yeah.
Person up there.
Yeah.
I say there now.
Where would he fall on the pay plan?
It would be a grade sixty-nine, you'll have to forgive me, I don't know what that, what that level is as far as the beginning pay for that level, off the top of my head. But I can find that information for you.
Please forgive me for asking, it was in here.
We can get that information to you.
I'd be glad to get that to you.
Well, who established that grade?
I established the grades, with the county manager.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's a lot of them, so I don't know the starting salary for that grade particularly, I'd have to look at it.
Is that position?
Are you asking for that position?
Yeah, for that position, yeah.
I don't know the answer to that question. It was a recommendation from the sheriff based on the opioid grant application they submitted.
And have we checked to validate that that is in line with other lead instructor salary range?
Don't want to give you misinformation, I can follow up with the sheriff and get that information for you.
Okay. Is that position currently filled? There's not, will the person that gets hired understand that it's grant funding, and that the grant funding will potentially go away? And understand, if there's not a position available at that time?
Yeah, my concern is that we do, in fact, research it to make sure it's within the guidelines of what that position would pay, you know, in the area.
Sure. We'll get that information, get it back, you're welcome.
Would you also mind, and Sarah, this might be a question.
All right.
Could we see the job description for that too?
Absolutely.
I would just be curious.
Yes.
Maybe you could share that with all of us.
I will make sure all those questions are answered for you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Did you want to leave it on or remove it for further information, or? I would like us to remove it until we get the additional information, we can bring it back at our next meeting, if that's okay. If there's any reason why don't. Yeah, that's fine, we can do that. Okay, great.
Get timeframe on that grant.
No, it's opioid funded, we're the man, you know, we're the ones that grant it.
Is there a time, I think, trying to Commissioner Acoch's question, is there a timeframe? I know that the sheriff might be trying to fill the position or get it in.
Well, they always push, you know, but quicker the better, but that didn't always happen. Yeah, I think two weeks would not be too much of a hindrance. Right. Okay, moving on to number nine is a motion to approve the Wayne County Volunteer Fire Department Funding Agreements for all Wayne County volunteer fire departments. As represented by the one attached agreement in your agenda, all agreements will be included in the final minutes. Questions on those, on that? This is basically the agreement that we have every year, is that correct? Yes, sir. Can you check anything?
There's no changes from previous years.
Okay, great. All righty, being noted further questions on that, we'll move to item number ten is a motion to approve amending the Wayne County Personnel Policy to require mandatory criminal background checks of certain employee applicants in compliance with S L twenty twenty five dash twenty six.
This I know a little bit more about. Sessions Law twenty twenty five dash sixteen passed means that General Statute one forty-three B was amended to require any local employee, any local government employee that may work with children in any capacity to have an SBI background check before being employed. So that means there's going to be a change in our budget line there, those are a little bit more expensive.
About two hundred, about two hundred dollars.
Um, well, they, they're only charging us thirty-eight dollars. Yeah, so there, I guess there's a limit to what they'll, what they'll charge us. It will take some organization with the Sheriff's Department, because they'll have to do the fingerprints. And it's, there's going to be, it's just going to be a big operational change, but we're going to work to make it as efficient as possible.
Well, that will be also with the DSS?
Yeah, any employee that may work with children in any capacity. So it's just vague enough to make me feel like it needs to be everybody.
So the Sheriff's Office will be doing the fingerprinting.
And they have, about a year, year and a half ago, they have Life Scan. So it's not where they have to go get physical prints and then mail it in, it can be done electronically. So that'll speed up the transmission of the fingerprints, I don't know how much it'll speed up actually processing the fingerprint.
Does that cost, is that over the above the thirty-eight dollars?
No, this included.
We're waiting to be told when it's done electronically, you could hear back anything within a week, which is our normal timeframe, but it could be up to thirty days if this person has lived in multiple states, or has ever had any background with the law enforcement. So it could, you know, put a little wrench in things, but we'll work on it.
Are there any employees that would not in some way come in contact with, with a child?
I am not personally comfortable saying that we have any employees that would never come in contact with children, just by the nature of what we do. Plus, we have our internship program, which is minors as well, so that kind of puts everybody.
So everyone now is just going to have to have a criminal background check?
Yeah, we don't have to go backwards to people who are currently employed, but moving forward. Any other questions for me?
Change it to sixteen, not twenty-six.
Is it sixteen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Moving on to number eleven is a motion to approve a revised daily vendor fee structure for a special. for special events at the farm credit, farmer's market. And our cooperative extension director is here to discuss.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, well, we just see the opportunity to have vendors and they don't really want to pay the annual fee because they just wanted to go to one or two events. So, um, we feel that it's fair for our vendors that they participate all year that if we just tell them, okay, because you're participating one, one day, we're gonna charge you five dollars. That's what the normal vendors or the regular vendors pay, uh, per day. So we want to, um, suggest that, uh, we can just do thirty-five dollars, uh, for, per event. Um, that way we can kind of like be in the middle with that. So I don't know if you have any questions?
So an annual fee is a hundred?
That's correct, sorry, yeah.
And if you're just participating in one day, it's thirty-five?
And normally it will be during, uh, big events like Discovery Day or we're trying to do, uh, like during the Christmas Bazaar with Extension and Community Association, uh, we bring a lot of people that they go to the farmer's market. So if they sell on that day, we kind of, um, guarantee that they will have more participants or more customers. So that's why we suggest to, uh, charge thirty-five dollars.
I mean, I'm okay with the conditions. Yeah, and that is that we monitor that and we find that we are losing participants as a result of it. We may want to readdress it.
Right. And that's what we're trying to learn, how, um, to be sure that we're being fair to all our vendors, especially the ones that they're loyal to us all year.
So if they pay, so you got, pretty much they got a spot, if they pay a hundred dollars and it's five dollars a day, so do they pay that, that upfront per month?
They, they're paying, uh, once a month, but if they already know that they will not be participating in one of the Saturdays or something, they don't pay for that Saturday or Friday. So they will check and say, okay, these are the dates that I'm planning to be the following month. And that's how they pay.
Well, with that fee, I mean, it'd almost be advantageous to go ahead and pay the hundred dollars because in three, three, uh, times, then you would exceed that.
For those vendors that they want to participate, I'll say as a business person, you just.
Pay the hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, right. But, um, some vendors, they are not interested in that. They just say, well, if I can go to your big event and then summer, I'll just pay thirty-five or the opening.
It says for vendors participating to, the rate would be seventy dollars.
So that is for the holidays. Uh, we're trying to add, um, a little bit of Christmas spirit into the farmer's market. Um, uh, exploring different ways to do it. Uh, we were trying to do one event at the end of the season, but it's not gonna work. So at this point, I ask ECA or Extension and Community Association if they will help us to sponsor, to decorate the, um, the farmer's market. And they have agreed. So I'm very excited about that. So we're trying to, um, have story time inside of the farmer's market and have that holiday spirit um, inside of the farmer's market. And if we have enough money, we'll decorate the outdoors, too. And that's, that's why we are doing that, to see if more vendors will come and enjoy the farmer's market. We're trying to be very creative because right now it's like, it's really slow. Like normally after, after the kids go back to school, it gets really slow and we're trying to figure out ways to bring more people. We do other activities like Tasty Friday and we, but it's still, it is hard. And, and, and it's even hard for the vendors to bring what, you know, what they need to bring.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, have a good day.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to number twelve is a motion to approve change order number two for the parking lot drainage improvements project. The change order has been approved by the Division of Border Infrastructure and adds thirty-four thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and seven cent to the project, which will be funded one hundred percent by state ARPA funds and appropriate budget amendment. And evidently, according to their notes, this is for repair of an existing pipe adjacent to the project area. It was discovered, uh, because of a sinkhole that was created, uh, between Aviation Drive and Phase Three Parking Lot Construction Area. The sinkhole was, appeared to be from a leaking joint, uh, where an eighteen inch concrete pipe was connected to a twenty-four inch pipe at some point in the past.
At airport.
Necessitating, yes, necessitating that repair. Any questions on that one?
It's been a sinkhole for a long time.
Do what?
It's been a sinkhole for a long time.
Yeah, I'm sure. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to number thirteen is a motion to approve change order number two for the perimeter fence project. The change order has been approved by the Division of Aviation and adds eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cent to the project with ninety percent funded by the state aid grant awarded for the project and appropriate budget amendment.
What was the change?
The change on that is.
Oh, back it, back, 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 back up.
The change order was needed to reconcile the final quantities for the project to add a pipe ditch crossing.
That's on the north end where we rode and you can't get across, I guess. The upper ditch going into the woods, is that right, Joe?
I really am not sure exactly where that was.
Well, me and, uh, when, when, uh, Ken, when I rode it here, I don't know, a month and a half ago, there's a section at the back that needs to have a cross line pipe put in so they can access it with the equipment. I think that's eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess the, uh, quantities of fencing poles used, I guess. Yeah, it says right there, would like to, uh, for the contract to leave a pipe installed for access during construction to be used for mowing and maintenance access.
Yeah, I see it now.
So any questions on that one?
So are they gonna, they're, we're still looking at the, uh, putting the road, the rock along the outside of the fence, correct? To maintain, to keep it maintained so we don't grow up like it did before?
As far as I know, yes, sir. It was not, it, it was not in, in this contract. No, no, it has nothing to do with this project.
Right, right. Yeah, but I'm asking this.
Yeah, it's had to be handled with facilities.
Okay, got it.
Okay, moving on, motion, uh, number fourteen is a motion to adopt a resolution declaring surplus real property and approving the sale of surplus property jointly owned by the town of Fremont, located at three oh five North Vance Street in Fremont.
This is a, um, previous foreclosure, um, that's jointly owned, there were no bidders at auction. So it's owned by the county and the town of Fremont. Uh, we had someone reach out to us and offer five thousand dollars for the property. Um, we've had no interest up until this time. The most recent tax appraise value for the, after the reappraisal was fifty-seven hundred dollars. So it's pretty close to the tax value. So if, um, you all approve today, we'll notify the adjoining property owners, advertise it. And if no upset bids, we'll send it to the town for their concurrence.
They've offered five thousand dollars?
Five thousand, mm-hmm.
That's just open land.
It is, yeah, there's no, nothing on there, there's no structures.
What town is that on the school? Which side of town is that on?
Vance, that's on the south side of town, I think.
It's, uh, North Vance.
North Vance or South Vance? North Vance, oh, it's on north side.
Isn't that across from the cemetery?
It is, yeah, that's the cemetery right there.
Okay, I see now.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on that one? If not, we'll move on to the next one, which would be item number fifteen, a motion to approve the NC DOT inspection and review agreement for the new Rosewood Middle School traffic light and appropriate budget amendment.
Um, this was a request by the school board, the school board attorney reached out to us. Um, if you recall, as part of the Rosewood Middle, um, renovation, there is gonna be a traffic light now at, it says Rosewood Middle, but it's the joint entrance for the high school and the middle school. Um, we're paying for the construction of that, but DMB, DMV will reimburse us the cost of that. Um, however, in order for us to proceed, we have to execute this agreement, um, for DOT to go out there and inspect it and make sure that it's built to specs. So even though they're gonna reimburse us, we still have to front the cost of their time to go out there and inspect it. And it says it's five thousand, but they anticipate it being closer to ten, so.
For inspection?
For inspection time, yes, sir.
So how does that impact the fire department and EMS? That traffic light, where's talking about?
I know that Davis Kane did a study on it and I assume as part of that study, that was taken into consideration, but I, outside of that, I don't know.
Light goes where I think it's gonna go, it's gonna back traffic right up in front of the fire department, when it's, when it's red anyway.
Probably, yeah.
That don't, that don't quite make.
Might, and of course need to have some project meetings as it goes.
Well, I mean, ain't really nothing you can do there. I mean, if you go put a light there, it's gonna back traffic up in front of the fire station.
Well, or if the light could be somehow controlled with the fire station whenever there's a call to be able to, or if the light is planned on working all day, or is the light just gonna be a flashing light in between times and it functions as a true stoplight, you know, in the morning and at midnight, it's missed.
Seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning and two to, well, sometimes it might be one, depending on who's thinking who up.
Do we have an agreement, um, which I'm, I'm sure we don't, I'm asking this question, but you know, the reimbursement? Yeah, cause right now everything has been in good faith, basically, that the state's gonna reimburse us for the construction of that.
Right, and we've received confirmation by email. It's in the state statute that when it's used for this purpose, that we would be reimbursed for it.
But would it, would it be in, in close proximity to five eighty-one light? I mean, that's, you know.
I think that would be a question for Davis Kane, they're the architects that's overseeing the, the study.
A motion called for them to study it?
I, I do not remember.
Was it them as much as it's NC DOT that's requiring the traffic light and the design of the light? That's NC DOT that's requiring that. It's not so much the architect.
Yeah, I mean, we, they had to hire the architect in order to complete the study for DOT, cause DOT is requiring that. And if you remember, we're building the light in the event that the middle school were to expand in the future. Because if you do all this work and then you don't build to full capacity now, five, ten years down the road, if you wanna add a facility, you're gonna have to go back and redo the entire parking lot. So this is built to withstand the test of time.
I'm just, I'm just worried about it blocking, because they got a sign right now and they put it all over social media, basically, please don't block the fire department, you know, entrance or exit.
Yeah, they've done, I went out there and met with Dr. Hales the first week of school and, uh, with James with the Rosewood Fire Department. And right now the construction's going on, so it's caused that intersection to be pretty hectic. But they've done a, the school district, I think, has done some changes in bail times, about five minutes to free that intersection up. So the Rose, I've been to the Rosewood Fire Department twice in the last month or two to talk with them about it. So right now they seem pretty good. And of course, Rosewood has a long-term plan at some point of trying to.
Go across the street.
Move across the street with the fire station if they ever can, you know, afford to construct a new station.
Well, that would be, that would let them get out because it would be, it would be in front, the first aid, they block them.
Right.
All right, I just wanted to bring that.
These things just concern me sometimes, this stuff, you know, because if they're telling you already it's gonna be ten thousand dollars, then why are we not doing it? Then I like to poke at them a little bit, well, you have an agreement here that's five thousand dollars and you're coming back to me telling me now it's gonna be ninety-five hundred or what?
They've, they've already said by email, in the emails I've seen, that it's not gonna be, that this, I think this is their default template and they're, they're starting to change them now to ten thousand, so.
And they're, they're doing, uh, monopoles and all that stuff for the lights, too, right?
I, I do not know.
I'm not sure, I'm not seeing the design.
I heard Johnson, okay.
I know at some point, didn't Representative Bell say something about also wanting to redo the intersection there, five eighty-one?
That's what they're doing with monopoles is what you were talking about, no?
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move on to, uh, number sixteen under new business, a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-nine, a resolution of the county of Wayne, North Carolina declaring its official intent to reimburse expenditures for Rosewood Elementary and Rosewood Middle School improvements under the United States Department of Treasury regulations. We'll discuss that in the meeting. Number seventeen, motion to approve the declaration of easements and restrictions for the Wayne County Business Campus. Go over those during the meeting as well. Number eighteen is a motion to approve the conveyance of lot two and point three eight acres of common area at the Wayne County Business Campus to the Wayne County Development Alliance. Number nineteen is a motion to approve the consulting agreement with Crossroads Strategies LLC, City of Goldsboro and the county of Wayne. After that, we move into the public comment period. Each speaker will have a limit of four minutes. County managers report, Board of Commissioners committee reports in closed session. And then we will adjourn after closed session. And we do have closed session. Do we wanna go into closed session now?
Yes, sir, we can, we can get a couple.
I'm moving on to closed session.
Got a motion on Florida going closed session, Mr. Doctor?
And that would be to discuss matters relating to location or expansion of industries in the county and to consult with your attorney to retain attorney-client privilege. in the county and to consult with your attorney to retain attorney-client privilege.
Commissioner George Wayne Akot will do the invocation.
You ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, Father, thank you for today, thank you for your many blessings. Just please give us the wisdom of making the right decisions for the County of Wayne and the citizens of Wayne County. We ask that you be with our leaders in Raleigh and, and in Washington. And we just, all the violence that's going on in this country, we just pray that somehow or another that you will intervene and, and just remember that we're all God's children. Just please remember our first responders, law enforcement, EMS, fire, all of our first responders, just keep them safe, keep our men and women in uniform safe. We are a military community. And we pray that all of our personnel, that Seymour Johnson will be safe and just be with the ones that are deployed now. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance, Commissioner Eomel.
Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and visible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Krupler?
Okay, we'll look for approval of the minutes to the August 19th meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve the August 19th minutes?
Remove.
Got a motion on the floor by Mr. Verla. Raise your hand if you approve. That's all approved.
All right, we're moving on to item number two, the discussion and adjustment of the agenda. We do have, I have some changes to the agenda. I'd like to remove item number four, which is the discussion of the use of October 8th settlement funds for the Ninth Judicial District's Accountability and Recovery Court. Under our consent agenda, as discussed, we would like to add Budget Amendment 104 under number five to the budget amendments. Uh, number eight, we'd like to remove number eight, which was a motion to adopt resolution 202528, adopting the 52nd Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan for Wayne County. a family-owned business in Mount Olive, when another call to serve brought him into local government and then beyond. And whereas Louis M. Pate Jr. served as a member of the Mount Olive Board of Commissioners, as the mayor of Mount Olive, as a member of the North Carolina House of Representatives, as a North Carolina state senator. And whereas Louis M. Pate Jr., a longtime member and leader of First Baptist Church of Mount Olive, also served in the Rotary Club, the Church Choir, the Wayne Oratories Society, and the Third Century Singers. And whereas Louis M. Pate Jr. is survived by his wife of 59 years, Joyce Garner Pate, their children Lisa and her husband Lee, Chip and his wife Catherine, and Frances and her husband James. He is also survived by his sister Beth and his nine grandchildren. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor and recognize the late Louis M. Pate Jr. for his decades of unselfish service to the citizens of Wayne County, North Carolina, the United States of America, and for answering the call to service with such dedication, adopted the 16th day of September, 2025. Madam Chair, I move that we accept this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Doctor. Motion on the floor to accept Louis Pate's resolution. Thank you very well, Ray.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that vote. What a great history and life he lived.
Yes, he did.
But moving on now to our appointment committee.
That would be me. Madam Chair, we bring before you a recommendation that we establish a voluntary agricultural district advisory board. And on that board, we would appoint Debray Worley, Brad West, Jeff Parks, Valerie Barwick, Sue McLennery, Ryan Robertson, and Jennifer Johnson as an ex-officiating member. We will bring these back up to you in our next meeting for a vote of approval. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda, we'll be looking for approval of our consent.
Motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as it stands.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Raise your hand if you approve. Thank you.
Thank you for that vote. Moving on now to new business, where we'll have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-29, a resolution of the county of Wayne, North Carolina declaring its official intent to reimburse expenditures for Rosewood Elementary, Rosewood Middle School improvements under the United States Department of Treasury regulations.
In this resolution, we've done these before when you all anticipate going out to borrow money for certain capital projects. So if you recall, we have several state grants to fund the Rosewood Middle School project. We have also rolled over some extra proceeds from our 2020 and 2022 financing to help fund that project. So to this point, we've been able to cash flow a lot of the work, so there's been no need to go out to borrow. Eventually, if you all decide that you want to go out and borrow for that project, there will need to be a reimbursement resolution. The reason why this is coming in front of you today is because the school board recently also approved an architect selection for Rosewood Elementary School, and that would be the addition. So the anticipated budget on that is $3 million. So in discussion with our financial advisors and our bond counsel, they recommended that we go ahead and move forward with the reimbursement resolution today. This does not bind you to borrow later on for the project. What this allows us to do is start paying these bills, and in the event we do borrow, we can reimburse ourselves later on. So all told, we're looking at approximately $5.7 million to borrow for Rosewood Middle School, and then additional $3 million will be needed. This is beyond the grants. So we've done a reimbursement resolution for $9 million. That will allow you to borrow up to $9 million and reimburse yourselves. Again, you don't have to borrow. We actually would not anticipate borrowing for several months because we can't go out and borrow for the Rosewood Elementary School addition until we have bids in hand. So I would say at the earliest, it would be sometime in the spring that we would need to. And we can cash flow the Rosewood Middle School project right now for some time with the grants we have. This does include some recent change orders to the Gem and Bleachers. Now, those have not been finally approved, but just to be on the conservative side, we have rolled that into the budget. But that doesn't mean that you're committed to those change orders at this time. This is just making sure that we're protected so we don't lose any money and we can reimburse ourselves if we go out and borrow later on.
You keep saying "if." I think the word is "when." But it is to our advantage to hold off on borrowing until interest rates hopefully will come down.
And we regularly do this. If you remember, we did this with Fremont, we did this with the jail. We start paying the bills before we even go out, before we borrow, because we have to go to the LGC for approval, and we can't go to the LGC until we bid everything out and we have hard costs of the project. So it's not unusual for you to do this ahead of time so you can pay the soft costs, which is the architect, grading, things like that, those preliminary costs.
Things so soft, by the way. They're not so soft.
They're not so soft. That's a dangerous term, you're right.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-29, a resolution declaring an official intent to reimburse expenditures for Rosewood Elementary and Rosewood Middle School improvements under the United States Department of Treasury regulations.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Doctor.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner Doctor.
Okay, thank you for that vote. Number 17 is a motion to approve the declaration of easements and restrictions for the Wayne County Business Campus.
Get up, I've got a map ready for you all. We have been working on this for quite some time, including construction and been working with outside counsel on this. This is for the Wayne County Business Campus, which is your new business campus on Pate Town Road. So it is, all the improvements are in. It's being advertised right now for potential buyers. So the final step is for you all to approve restrictions in the park that would govern what can go out there, what can be constructed, how the, most importantly, and the reason for this, is how the maintenance costs of the common areas and the stormwater control measures are split among the tenants. So that's the main reason for these restrictions. Right here on this page, you can see the final plaque. This is awaiting final approval. DOT has signed off on this. Our planning director has signed off on it. It's with the city right now. My understanding is they were looking at it late last week and today. So hopefully, it will be recorded this week. And this is the map that we are referencing in our easements.
Is the common area there? Is that where you're talking about the park?
It is. So right where my, the mouse is, so this is the common area. And then the main source of the maintenance is going to be the stormwater control pond. That's a pretty big pond out there, and it controls all the stormwater for Phase 1. So what we wanted to be, to ensure when we start selling these to different tenants, is that there's some mechanism in place to make sure that everybody shares in the cost of maintaining that. So you're talking about, you know, just the landscaping involved with it, if there needs to be some sort of algae control, if there needs to be a fountain feature put in, something along those lines. Because that is the area that retains all the water for the park. And then there's also some downstream, there's some other landowners that we want to make sure that this is maintained properly.
That would include the weir wall?
It would, yes. So right here on the back, there is a weir wall that's going to require constant maintenance and just make sure that it's being maintained properly.
So is there a inspection, yearly inspection on that?
Cities required to inspect it yearly.
So any repairs would be jointly shared by all these landowners?
If I could, while you've got that map up, I want to point out that the development of this park is a little bit unique in that all of the water retention requirements already improved for these particular lots. So all of these really are going to have no set aside for water retention.
Right, so anybody who purchases land within here, all the water is taken, all the stormwater is taken care of. Now, this is just for Phase 1. Phase 2 is back behind here, where it says future development area. There are some more stormwater control measures that will have to be included in that when that, when we move forward with that. But that just depends on how those lots are laid out. I will say right now that these easements only, these declarations and covenants only apply to Phase 1, but they are, we anticipate rolling in Phase 2 into these covenants as well. And there's language in the existing covenants that would allow us to roll Phase 2 in.
Great. So are there just, I thought there's eight lots, so just seven?
Just seven.
So how, I guess you'll get to the language after five.
So this is just a quick overview. Approximately almost 41 acres total. Actually, let me back up and point something out that we didn't discuss. Just wanted to draw your attention to this right here, that there is a secondary emergency access to the park. So I know that that came up in original design, but that is laid out in here. So that, and that is paid so that a fire truck or emergency services could get into the park in the event that the main access is.
That's right, because ABC is not paid.
Oh, excuse me, what did I say? Did I say paid? Yeah, it's, right, yeah. So it's approximately 41 acres and seven lots. So there are no use restrictions in our covenants. Any use restrictions just falls within the city of Goldsboro's uniform ordinance, development ordinance. And we did that on purpose. We didn't want to put any restrictions on this to restrict anyone that we could advertise to. We've run into that in Park East, where when Park East was first developed, there was a large amount of restrictions on there. And if you recall, every lot that we end up selling, we have to exempt it out of the covenants. So we don't want to get in that position again. So it is zoned industrial with the city of Goldsboro, so any permissible use under that, under industrial, would be able to go into the park. Likewise, there's no architectural requirements, there's no architectural committee. We did not want to put that sort of restrictions on anybody who buys it. And then again, we plan to extend the covenants to Phase 2 when those are developed. So right now, Wayne County would be responsible for maintenance of all the common areas because we own everything. Once all these lots are sold out, what we will do is we would develop, create a homeowners or an owners association who would oversee the maintenance of that. So there would be an independent third party that we would develop, and we can work out, you know, how that would be structured. But eventually, responsibility for maintenance would be taken away from the county and go into this owners association. Because ideally, we sell all seven lots to private companies, and we're out of the park, and they can thrive and do what they need to do. So eventually, all the costs will be shared evenly and administered by an owners association. The obligations are repairing, replacing, and cleaning of the signs, all landscaping, maintaining the access easements and costs associated with those. And then the big one, as we mentioned, is operating, repairing, maintaining the stormwater drainage system. Because that's going to be a substantial amount of the cost.
Am I understanding you to say that the owners association would not be active until all of the lots, seven lots are sold?
That's within the discretion of the county. We could create one right now if we wanted to. But right, but what we're going to do is try to sell some of these lots and then see how this goes. And then if we, if we sell two lots and we see the need that we need to go ahead and develop it, we can do it then. We don't have to wait till they're all sold. We can do it whenever.
So we can do it at any time.
At any time. So the owners association would be our designate. So right now, we just kept it with Wayne County, and then as we sell them, we can figure that out.
My only thing with that, with those that are interested in buying or building out there is that are we going to give them a heads up that this is something that's coming?
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, it's not unfair that you, I buy this, and I'm not knowing this moving in, that, you know, I'm going to be responsible for X, Y, Z.
Yes, sir. So after I go over it today, if you all approve it, then the next page in your agenda is actually the covenants themselves, and they'll be recorded. So they'll be on record with the redshirt deeds office, so anybody who buys this property will understand that these apply to them.
Okay, thank you.
That would be part of your due diligence. And remember, somebody coming in here to build, they'll already be aware that you could build 100% impervious on these lots because stormwater is off site. That's a selling point.
That's a big selling point.
And you're sharing the cost of, I mean, basically it costs you the same amount to do one as it does seven, or more for seven than it does one.
And then this, this page just kind of breaks down. I know I've said that everybody's going to share the cost. The way that it is, that it's structured in the covenants right now is it's based off acreage. So I, and I did a breakdown of all the acreage right here. So the more acreage you have, the larger percentage of the cost that you would undertake. So for example, Lot 1 is 4.2 acres, that represents 12%, so they'd be responsible for 12% of the annual cost of the, of the park maintenance.
That's what I was asking. So if we, if we combine two lots for somebody, then it would just.
And then again, we plan to extend the covenants to Phase Two when those are developed. So right now, Wayne County would be responsible for maintenance of all the common areas because we own everything. Once all these lots are sold out, what we will do is we would develop, create a homeowners or an owners association who would oversee the maintenance of that. So there would be an independent third party that we would develop, and we can work out, you know, how that would be structured. But eventually, responsibility for maintenance would be taken away from the county and go into this owners association. Because ideally, we sell all seven lots to private companies and we're out of the park, and they can thrive and, and do what they need to do. So eventually, all the costs will be shared evenly and administered by an owners association. The obligations are repairing, replacing, and cleaning of the signs, all landscaping, maintaining the access easements and costs associated with those. And then the big one, as we've mentioned, is operating, repairing, maintaining the stormwater drainage system. Because that's going to be a substantial amount of the cost.
My understanding you to say that the owners association would not be active until all of the lots, seven lots are sold?
That's within the discretion of the county. We could create one right now if we wanted to. But right, but what we're going to do is try to sell some of these lots and then see how this goes. And then if we, if we sell two lots and we see the need that we need to go ahead and develop it, we can do it then. We don't have to wait till they're all sold, we can do it whenever.
We can do it at any time.
At any time. So the, the owners association would be our designate. So right now, we just kept it with Wayne County, and then as we sell them, we can figure that out.
My, my only thing with that, with those that are interested in buying or building out there is that, are we going to give them a heads up that this is something that's coming?
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, it's not unfair that you, I buy this and I'm not knowing this moving in that, you know, I'm going to be responsible for X, Y, Z.
Yes, sir, so after I go over it today, if you all approve it, then the next page in your agenda is actually the covenants themselves, and they'll be recorded. So they'll be on record with the Red Shire Deeds Office, so anybody who buys this property will understand that these apply to them.
Okay, thank you.
That would be part of your due diligence. And remember, somebody coming in here to build, they'll already be aware that you could build a hundred percent impervious on these lots because stormwater is off site.
That's a, that's a.
That's a selling point.
That's a big selling point.
And you're sharing the cost of, I mean, basically it costs you the same amount to do one as it does seven. Or more for seven than it does one.
And then this, this page just kind of breaks down, I know I've said that everybody's going to share the cost. The way that it is, that it's structured in the covenants right now is it's based off acreage. So I, and I did a breakdown of all the acreage right here. So the more acreage you have, the larger percentage of the cost that you would undertake. So, for example, Lot One is four point two acres, that represents twelve percent, so they'd be responsible for twelve percent of the annual cost of the, of the park maintenance.
That's what I was asking. So if we, if we combine two lots for somebody, then it would just.
Then it would, it would all be, be off acreage.
It's not by the law, it's by the.
And the covenants also include a five percent management fee, which the county could charge, and that covers our costs to manage all the payments, manage, you know, getting landscapers out, anything like that. And if we turn that over to an owners association, they could charge that fee and pass it on to the owner as well.
How many lots do we have sold, Andrew?
Right now, just Lot Two is the only one that's under, that's going to be under development. And then this is, are just some miscellaneous terms of the covenants. Maintenance fees will be liens on the property. So anything that is unpaid technically could, legal action would be taken to put a lien on those lots if the landowner doesn't pay them. They're effective. That is not right.
I, I read that.
It's twenty years, it, it is twenty, it's effective for twenty years and may be extended for five-year periods.
So that should be twenty forty-four.
Twenty forty-four, correct. And then it can be extended for five-year periods. And then it can be amended with sixty percent of the owner's consent or by Wayne County by itself, if Wayne County owns at least fifty, fifty-one percent of the property subject to covenants. And then all owners would be responsible for maintenance on their own site.
And all this will be attached to the.
It'll be recorded in the Red Shire Deeds. Double check, and I'll get you those dates real quick. But it is twenty years, and then it can be extended for five-year periods.
So the, all this land is in the county, correct?
It's in the ETJ of the city.
But it's in the county. It's county, it's, it's not annexed into the city.
Correct, mm-hmm, correct.
Actually, this says until June thirtieth of twenty fifty-four.
Fifty-four, thank you.
And then five years.
And then five years. But it is correct in the document itself.
Yep, it is.
Yeah, so it's up until June thirtieth of twenty fifty-four, and then extended for five-year term.
Right.
And I would point out too, in the covenant document itself, there is a blank for the reference plat. Plat cabinet and slide, the only reason that's blank right now is because we're waiting on final approval. And then once this is recorded, I will insert the correct documentation of the plat before we sign it and get it recorded.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve the Declaration of Easements and Restrictions for County, Wayne County Business Campus. With the corrections that, there's not any corrections.
Just insert the plat, the reference plat into the final copy.
What Mr. Neil said.
All right, Karen, we have a motion on the floor, Commissioner Gurley.
All right, those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to number eighteen. A motion to approve the conveyance of Lot Two and point three eight acres of common area at Wayne County Business Campus to the Wayne County Development Alliance.
And this is, answers your question, Ms. Akok. So I left the map up there. Wayne County Development Alliance has been working on securing buyers for this property, kind of like what they do in Park East, they advertise our properties out there and try to find buyers. They have gotten under contract with the ABC Board for Lot Two, for the purchase of Lot Two, which is the second lot on the left when you come in. And AB, the ABC Board has plans to create a warehouse out there. It would not be retail, it would just be their central distribution warehouse. So we'd be looking to convey that to WCDAs. So on behalf of the county, they can move forward with that project. And then the other piece is right there at the front, when you turn in, it's to your right. So the area that's labeled combined zero point three eight acres. That immediately adjoins TA Loving. And when the, this park was developed, for some reason, it included that little ditch area right there. WCDAs been in talks with TA Loving, that TA Loving would do improvements right there and maintain that ditch so that future owners don't have to worry about that. So they've actually already started on a lot of those improvements now. So we'd be looking to convey that out to TA Loving so that the future owners of the park don't have to maintain that small little area.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the conveyance of Lot Two and the point three eight acres of common area at the Wayne County Business Campus to the Wayne County Development Alliance.
Thank you. Commissioner Daughtry?
All right, we have a motion on the floor, those in favor, raise your right hand. Pass unanimously.
Thank you. And number nineteen is a motion to approve the consulting agreement with Crossroads Strategies LLC, the City of Goldsboro, and the County of Wayne.
Yeah, this is the annual agreement that we enter into with Crossroads, Crossroads Strategies. This is the lobbyists that we contract with along with the City of Goldsboro for lobbyist activities on behalf of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. They advise us on matters in the Department of Defense in Washington. And the city has already approved this, this is a joint effort with the City of Goldsboro for those consultants.
Under the same terms as.
Same terms, it's the same terms as last year, same price as everything, and the money's already been budgeted in this year.
Mr. Girard's here, does he need to speak on the other?
Would you like to say the same?
What, a quick question. What, what all have they been lobbying for?
That might be, that might be a.
That may be a Ken Girard question.
Their efforts have been, right now, to, to secure our mission that we currently have, and also to increase our mission, you know, we have, the F-15Es have been reviewed and looked at by the Department of Defense or Department of War now, I guess it is. But, so the efforts have been in joint with Representative Davis and also with Senator Bud's office to lobby the Air Force and the other members of Congress through the Armed Services Committees to, to make sure that we, we're a part of the plan in terms of as they start the besting, if the older, if the two-twenty engine F-15Es. And so that's been the biggest effort right now. I mean, we have some quality of life things that we would like to work with on housing, education, those kind of things, but, and we've talked with the city about those things. But for the, right now, the biggest push has been on the F-15Es.
And that was, that was going to be my next question, was making sure that we're still, you know, focused on quality of life for the young airmen and education, also license transfer.
Absolutely, right.
And all those things also, because it's, you know, there might be smaller issues, but keep aircrafts here, and then those families come in and they struggle, or the young, you're eighteen, you just left your parents' house, and you come to Goldsboro, and you have to get an apartment that's fifteen hundred dollars instead of being able to stay in the barracks, makes a big difference.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, so those are some of the things I would hope that we focus on also.
Well, it, it could be as much as also putting the right people in place to help with the housing. Because there's been some public-private partnerships at other air bases that have worked on some of the housing. And so it could be just putting the right people in the right, together for that effort.
The last time we were on base, we actually had that discussion as far as the housing part, you know, about the private-public partnership.
So that, that's been successful at other places, I'm not that familiar with it, but that, that could be a, a quick way, a low-hanging fruit kind of thing.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I just don't want that forgotten about.
Absolutely, no, that, that is clearly, if, they, they go hand in hand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion we approve the consultant agreement with Crossroads Strategies LLC along with the City of Goldsboro and the County of Wayne.
Got a motion on the floor, Mr. Gurley. All in favor, raise your hand.
All those against?
No, no.
Motion passes six to one.
Right, thank you for that. We now come to our public comment section, do we have anybody signing up for public comments?
We do, Mr. Melvin Tapt.
Mr. Melvin. I don't hear you, Will. I've got to disappear, Dave, my man. Anyway. I appreciate you listening to me the last time, and I'm going to hope to create a dialogue between us all, so we can begin to talk to one another to see if we can work together to make this a better Wayne County. I appreciate Commissioner Harold taking time to come spend some time with me last week to look at some issues in District Two, which was not actually in his district. We went over a lot of stuff. He took about two and a half or three hours to ride some roads and look at some things that really are against the law, and some ordinances are already in place, but no one enforces them. It's, it's pretty tough to look at and to know that it's going on, but it's not addressed. We have code enforcement officers there too in the county. But I don't know where they are. I've tried to, I've made contact with Jeff Sparrow the last time, about three months ago, and told me, you know, he didn't know when he could get there. In my little neighborhood, it took five years to get rid of the dogs. And the main reason is because the dogs continue to raise over on a person's lot called Gene Gilam, which is an atrocious mess. Now we've got a cat problem. And they're going to continue to raise as long as we've got a habitat there for them to raise in. It's at least an acre of just a bunch of mess. I don't know how to do it, deal with it, other than I would, maybe I could get a appointment with the sheriff and some of his deputies could come out there and practice, which would be a good solution. It wouldn't take any high-powered round, just twenty-two would pop them out. And the possums would drag them off. That's that issue. You know, a truck sits on the side of the road, a state road, for three or four weeks. It finally got moved, I don't know if Commissioner Harold had anything to do with it or not, but it just moved from one spot to another with no tags, no DOT numbers. And it takes a CDL drive, license to drive it. It don't make a lot of sense to me either. I've talked to about sixty people now throughout the county, and I want to continue to, and I'll continue to talk to people to get them to know the commissioners, but I'm going to tell you, out of the sixty people I've talked with, not one of them knows what commissioner is their district. Only one of them knew what district they were in. And that brings up another thing concerning the meandering of the districts. I printed some maps, and I printed some, some budgets. No one agrees with this budget. No one can believe that it is as big as what it is. The question that keeps coming up, has any of you all read it in its entirety? I don't know the answer to that. I hope you have. The county plat. It's the most meandered thing for districts. No one sane would do something like that. But it's what it is. The, the budget, some expenses, I will tell you that I experienced, is I called the Ms. Bowden, you all probably know her, one of the assistants, anywhere, to have a copy of the budget printed. And she informed me it would be seventy-five dollars. I said, okay, I want a copy of it, so anyway, I'm going to figure out what I got to do. I didn't make that choice, but I went to AccuCopy, and they printed for me for thirty. Staples were printed for twenty-five. The county, the plat of the county, I went to Julio up in the planning board, planning office, and he and I selected a twenty-four to thirty-six. It cost me thirty-three dollars and fifty cents to have it printed. AccuCopy printed for seven ninety-five. Staples were printed for five. My time's up. Thank you, sir. I want you to have this.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
No, sir.
That being said, public comment time is closed. We can go ahead and go to County Manager's Report, and I'll bypass my comments, and we'll go to Board of Commissioners Committee Reports.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I want to talk a little bit about attending the North Carolina Association for County Commissioners in Greenville. That was a nice event, we learned a lot there. Saw a lot of familiar faces, saw a lot of our representatives as well. Want to give condolences to the, to Grady's Barbecue, the family. That was an icon, he's going to be missed. Amazing man. Also, had the opportunity to go to the opening of the DSS Health Department. Never seen so many smiling employees the whole while I've been in, in Wayne County. I mean, they were so happy with the new facility. You know, it's just great energy, them moving in. You know, this board did a great thing with, with sacrificing and building a new location that's safe, that's clean, and just, you know, just has all the amenities of a top-tier facility. So very proud of that. And in response to Mr. Melvin Tapt, I think that you have it wrong when you say that people don't know who their commissioners are. I think that it's kind of, you know, I've just started seeing you here, and I, I'm glad that you are involved, but there's a lot of things that the people that you are interacting with, they're just, they just aren't aware of the politics, and they're not aware of what these commissioners do up here, including myself. You know, and if there's a District Two issue, all you have to do is email me, and I'll go out there and I'll see what you're talking about. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Daughtry?
Can I make a comment? Again, again, excuse me. Again, Madam Chair, I reiterate my sincere concern and of the loss of Louis Pate. He was not only a true gentleman, but sacrificed a great deal in serving our community. I remember meeting with Louis when he was serving as Mayor of Mount Olive, meeting with him and asking him to consider running for the North Carolina House. And I remember him chuckling back that, he said, why in the world would you have such an idea? But he stepped forward and, as we have, put their person, personal lives aside and sacrificed much to, to not only run, but actually serve as a representative in Raleigh, and then as our senator. So, again, I hope we all take a moment to honor his service to our community.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Akon?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the rest of the board for covering for me on some of the. I just wanted to thank the rest of the board for covering for me on some of the events that's been going on. I'm gonna try to do better, but. When you're dealing with health issues, you never know, but I just wanted to, I appreciate the rest of you covering for some of the events. I did go to the, to the opening of the DSS and Health Department and Commissioner Williams was right, I mean, they were, there was not a face there that wasn't smiling. I mean, they were tickled to death. And we've got some other projects that's gonna be just as important. And also, I found out some tragic news yesterday. Ms. Audra West from West Family Farms, they put in Northern Indian County, passed away. And her, her, her family and her ex, her husband that passed away, they were icons in the northern Indian County. Things that they did for not only the northern, but for the whole county, that they, they did not want any recognition for. It's one of the most well-thought-of and respected families in northern Wayne County and Ms. Audra will certainly be missed. But we, we've all got to go sometime. I think that's it, Madam Chair.
Well, I was not aware of Ms. West passing.
Yeah, passed away there for yesterday.
When is the funeral, do you know? Do you know when the funeral is?
I do not what, I do not know what the arrangements are, I'm quite sure they've made them, but I don't know what they are.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes, ma'am. As Mr. Acock just alluded to, Ms. Audra passed away Saturday night. Great woman. The family and my family's been friends for probably 40-plus years and good people. She'll be, she'll be, we assume our funeral home is, has her arrangements. DOT Projects, the, as I stated at the last meeting, Berkeley Boulevard expansion from New Hope Road to I-42 is set to begin January of '26. Waymore Drive expansion from New Hope Road to I-42 is set to start March of '26, so both northern entrances to Wayne County is gonna be in construction at the same time within two months of each other, so that's gonna be some, other roads will be impacted, especially 111 and not to mention the school traffic, so we're trying to work around that. Royal Avenue project is near completion, it's opened, the light is opened, but the light, the loop for the light has been cut in preparation or doing the expansion there. And I'm not, I've not got a report back when it will be put back in the loop, therefore the lights are not in sequence, so traffic kind of backs up on Berkeley in that area even worse than it normally is. The 13 North improvements from Sauson Road to Road Elbera, the turn lane projects, land acquisition, right-of-way acquisition is actually in process. I don't think it's gonna start until '28. The section on Waymore Drive from the bypass to the creek, there's Stone Creek Church Road, we tried to move it up, but the way funding is, we tried to get it put in place before they did the widening of Waymore Drive from New Hope to I-42, but they can't do that, so that's gonna start, that'll start in March of '28 as well. They're in the process of looking at all the cross lines in the county for drainage and most of them, when they, when they replace them, they're actually enlarging them because of all the impervious runoff that we're having, or runoff that we're having because of impervious surface. So there, they'll, they'll be looking at those over the county for the next 12 to 18 months. And I think that's about covered what we did, and that's all we can offer. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Harold?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Taff. Mr. Melvin and I met for a good three hours and had a great conversation, both on a personal level, running about our families. He closed his business down for us to spend time together, so I know that was important to him. And I have spent many a day in my life around Dudley. Young's Auto Salvage used to be a family business years ago, so I grew up around there and spent years at Southern Wayne High School and there were things that Mr. Taff and I wrote down in places I had not been at to see things that I think he is probably correct, that we have some code enforcement issues that might need to be somehow addressed at some point in time. But I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule, Mr. Melvin, and closing your business down for us to ride together. And I appreciate personal conversations that we had too. I had the opportunity, thanks to our chair, to be in Hunt Institute and that finished up about two weeks ago and that was a great opportunity with other elected officials across the state, mayors, councilmen and women, sheriffs, to meet and talk about policy and educational policy, childcare. We had three sessions, the first session was on our childcare system and that deficit that we have and that in the state of North Carolina now, it can cost more for a family for childcare than it can for tuition to UNC healthcare, or excuse me, UNC school, which is pretty astounding now. We looked at K-12 issues, we had senators and we had representatives come to speak to us about those issues. The last session we had was on higher ed and I have a real concern, as I know that we all do, when it comes to skills, trades, what we're offering our young people as well as the cost. You know, when I went to NC State back in the 90s, it was $3,800 to go to NC State University. Now it's 10, $60,000 education's become $150,000 education. And I became a teacher and I made $27,000 a year on a teacher's salary.
Careful, you're showing your age.
I had a staffer loan and I was able to pay it back and that staffer loan helped me build a line of credit when I wanted to buy my first car that mom and dad didn't have to co-sign with me on. But now, you know, teacher salaries have not doubled or tripled, but that's just an example. So I really have a concern when it comes to our, our children just having access, and I think our community college system is important too, to help make their lives better, just because of all kinds of things that I won't get into. But I also had an opportunity to go to the NC Child presentation that Wade just sponsored at Lane Tree and that was really eye-opening, as usual, that's a report card on the state of our children in North Carolina, looking at our mental health situation that we know we have a lot of mental health needs, our poverty level, and we all know that, you know, all of our children in Wayne County eat for free because the majority of our families are on some type of public assistance in our county. So it was really good to see the data and just look at that, that research. I've had the opportunity, you know, to go to visit, our fire department's been trying to get out in the community. I went to Granttham last night, they had a steak dinner, which was great to be there and have been to Rosewood twice, as I've talked about, been all over the place. Well, I can't help it, I'm sorry. Also Tri-County, I served on Tri-County Nominating Committee for their board and did that last week. That was great to be involved with Tri-County and the Electrical Cooperative. The programs that the Electric Cooperative do, it's really amazing, the scholarship programs they offer for our schools as well as for our fire trucks, as I obviously, I know Commissioner Gurley and Commissioner Acock are aware of, you know, when a fire truck costs a million dollars or more and Tri-County has an opportunity for a loan program that they do not charge any interest on to help our fire departments provide this public safety service. So it's just looking at what the cooperative does, so that was great. Again, I was able to attend the DHS opening of Ginger and Chip and all the staff, all the hard work that's going into that. That was nothing but smiling faces. Commissioner Acock and I, we walked around, I just wanted the tee-shirt and some of the balloons. Everybody was so, so happy for that building to be up and running. The CIT building yesterday, it was great to see that and what that brings to the county and hopefully opportunity for adults as, as well as young people, you know, furthering their education. So there's just a lot going on. Mr. Louis Pate, again, that's a loss to our community and our county with the service that he provided and the service to his country, as Commissioner Dawery read, you know, his accolades of what he did in his life and the service he gave to our country, keeping us safe and protecting our freedoms. Remember, we have the fair coming up, we haven't mentioned the fair, but that, that starts at the end of this month, so please take an opportunity to get out to the Wayne County Agriculture Fair, or Regional Fair, I guess it is, and see the exhibits, patronize, you know, all the local booths of our EMTs and fire departments and churches that are, use those as a fundraiser. And this is fundraising month, so as you know, you're probably already getting calls from churches and it's harvest sales and those things are going on supporting our community, so please remember those. Also, I think the school district had a good start, at least to the year, thanks to the sheriff and our deputies, you know, for trying to help keep our young people safe. We appreciate that and the service that you provide and the City of Goldsboro, so I don't want to mention that because they do have resource officers at some of our schools, so thank you for that as well. And I know I talked a lot, but I will. It's been a while since we had our last meeting, so. Yeah, let me go to the next one. I'm done.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes. A lot of times when I'm out in the community, I run into a few volunteer firefighters, sheriffs, EMS workers, and a lot of times, a lot of them say the same thing to me, that they are thankful for this board and that, for our dedication to support them. And I just wanted to say that because I don't know how many of us hear that sometimes, you know. I recently ran into a young lady and I think she works for EMS, she said she works for EMS and she was just like, you know, I just want to thank you. And I was like, well, it's the entire board, you know what I mean? And then most of the time it's led by Chris and, well, Commissioner, Chris and Commissioner Acock, Wayne. A lot of times because that's an area that they're adamant about, an area that they both worked in and, you know, most of us just follow, follow their lead because they know so much about the area. But while I was talking to this young lady, I asked her about how the mental status, mental status of, of a lot of the EMS workers, sheriffs, volunteer firefighters, our DSS, because this month is suicide prevention month and we never know what they deal with on a daily basis and what they see. You know, I can only imagine getting phone calls of someone losing their child or someone in an accident and just having to go home and sleep with those thoughts or seeing someone shot and killed or, I haven't had to deal with any of that in my life, so I don't know how that trauma actually feels. But I did ask, you know, if we had, you know, someone available for most of them to talk to and she said yes, but most don't take advantage of it. But I will say, you know, if, if there is times or anything, make sure you reach out to someone, we have suicide lines and, you know, we have someone here in the county that you can reach out and talk to and those are private conversations that are supposed to stay between you and that, that, that individual. So, please don't harbor that and, you know, let it build up and fester in some, some a whole lot worse because we need you and we're thankful for you. And that's it.
Madam Chair? I'd like to follow up on what Commissioner Foster just said. I had the opportunity the other day to talk to a Goldsboro police officer and I don't know how the subject came up, but, you know, we're talking about, you know, be safe and, you know, look after yourself first and all, and it come up about the way that the first responders are treated sometimes. And I had never really thought about it, but he said, you know, he said the police officers are taught ugly too and all, the firefighters are. He said, but the group that really reaches its worst is our EMT workers. He says, it is unreal the way they're treated when they respond to a call. He said, it's, it's just, you know, they're there to help them and they're treated like dirt. He said, he said, they were just, he said, I don't know how they do it sometimes. He said, I couldn't, he said, I couldn't keep my cool. But I thought you'd appreciate that, Alex, but he, he did, he pointed out the EMS, EMTs that were probably treated the worst.
Madam Chair, I did have one additional remark that I wanted to make. And that is a big shout-out to our school board and our school principal. The news that came out recently was phenomenal in regards to our test scores and getting our schools off of the low-performance rating. I mean, it really is remarkable how well they have moved the needle and improved our education here in Wayne County. I think we all read those articles. I don't have the stats or the numbers, but as many people know, I have questioned our schools here in Wayne County and been very vocal. So let me be just as vocal of saying, attaboy, what a great job you're doing and we're moving in the right direction. So, again, thank you, school board, and thank you, our teachers and administrators and especially our new superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, I do want to apologize that I could not make the CTI yesterday, but I could not speak yesterday, so it wouldn't be very eventful for me to stand out there and just look at everybody and cut the dogs because I didn't have a voice. But the, the building though, I look at it as something that is saying to our community, we've got a vision, number one, and we're saying, number two, we're ready. We're ready for companies to come to our community. We have to train staff and I think it's being shown of what we're doing. That building's gonna mean so much by training our new workforce. I remember when I first went back to Wayne Community College at 28-years-old, I walked through those doors scared to death, decided I needed, you know, more education. But when I walked through those doors, my life changed, confidence, a skill, and then I went on further to Mount Olive to finish. Took me a long time working and going to school, but I've seen how important it is. So when those people walk or students walk through those doors, their lives is gonna change. And I can't thank Dr. Patty and her staff and the donors who contributed for this building and what it's gonna do to a lot of lives in Wayne County and outside of Wayne County. Sorry to hear about Ms. West passing, I was not aware of that, that is such a big shock. She was a wonderful woman, woman, if you ever went to her cookouts at December, she was always there, smiling and greeting you, so that will be missed. Louis Pate, it's gonna be a big loss, it's gonna be big shoes to fill. And what worries me about a lot of these things, who is coming along to fill a lot of these shoes? I don't see a lot of people coming in like Louis Pate and some others. The DSS Health Department, DHS now we call it, I am so happy to see those people happy and have a great workforce today and feel comfortable and safe in what they're doing. Suicide Month, it is a scary thing that we never know when somebody reaches that point. And the EMS, you know, maybe we should, I know when I was working at the company, the managers, you know, we had help there because of the strenuous parts of the job. The staff manager, he'd say, all right, you got an appointment, whether you go in there and just sit and look at him or have something to say. And most of the time when people get in that group, they do have something to say. So maybe, you know, encouraging them just to have an appointment, go, say hello or goodbye. But it gives them the opportunity to go out there. All right, and those in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Let me get the all clear.
Okay, we're out of closed session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we decline change order number six for the Rosewood Middle School.
You have a motion on the floor? Commissioner Gurley.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Excuse me.
Is that it now?
Yep.
Done?
Adjourned.